Can they not hear me? Welcome, everyone. I, Councilmember Hunt, call the June 28, 2022 City Council Planning, Development and Environment Committee meeting to order. I am Councilmember Hunt, and I am here with Councilmember Ray and Council President Walsh. On our agenda this evening, we have two items, and there will also be public comments opportunities. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's two agenda items. Members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. And those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you are on the phone, press star three. If you've joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. And I do not see anyone in the room. So I will take a minute to see if anybody would like to give general public comments to the committee at this time. And I'll check in with the city clerk. Clerk, has anyone indicated a desire to speak?
Councilmember Hunt, no one has signed up previously to speak at public comment.
Thank you. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isicawa.gov. And with that, we will move to our first agenda item of the evening, which is approve minutes. We have minutes from the June 7, 2022 City Council Planning, Development and Environment Committee meeting. And I will check in with the committee members if there is any corrections or additions on this item.
Since I wasn't at the meeting, I don't know that I can provide anything there.
Okay, thank you. I had one comment, which is that one of the recommendations was to... There were several process recommendations that came out of that meeting as far as addressing community concerns around the process and clarifying things. And one of them was to make sure that the goals and outcomes chart that's used to guide the Title 18 process was easily available and is with the rest of the Title 18 documents on the website. And so that would just be one clarification that I'd like to suggest adding to the minutes. Other than that, I think, aside from that minor addition, I thought this correctly captured our meeting minutes. So I'll check in if we can make that one addition to the meeting minutes, and then with that, we can approve as amended.
Certainly, we can make that change.
Great, thank you. And I think we can formally vote, although we can abstain. So those in favor of approving the meeting minutes, as would be amended by my previous statement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. So the next item is ID 1136, Heat Pump Program for Low-Income Residents. And this will be presented by Stacy Van McInstry, the Sustainability Manager. So welcome, Stacy.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Hunt, Ray, and Council President Walsh. Tonight, I'm joined by Amy Betel from Spark Northwest. She's here to help answer any questions that you might have this evening. So tonight, we are here requesting your approval to proceed with an additional appropriation of $125,000 from the Sustainability Fund to support the low-income component of our heat pump program. As you are aware, buildings are one of the most rapidly growing sources of greenhouse gas emissions in Washington State, and buildings and homes account for about 61% of Issaquah's greenhouse gas emissions. Investing in energy efficiency is a cost-effective way to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. Finding opportunities to work with existing homes and buildings to support energy efficiency and greenhouse gas emissions reduction can be challenging. The administration is seeking this appropriation to support, as I mentioned, our heat pump program for low-income residents. This program will support the city's work with existing homes and buildings while providing an equity focus. The heat pump program was identified as an early action within the Climate Action Plan. Funding for installation in low-income housing, again, will provide that equity component to what is a larger campaign and program. The city is partnering with the nonprofit organization Spark Northwest, as well as the cities of Kirkland, Mercer Island, Bellevue, and Redmond to run a heat pump program. We are also working with Imagine Housing, Hope Link, King County Housing Authority, with intent to really maximize the funding and to help identify the residents that are most in need of energy upgrades. As residents of the Northwest face more extreme heat events and seek to electrify homes, heat pumps are a very attractive solution. They provide heating, cooling, and a single package while also reducing carbon emissions, can help lower utility bills, and they also increase home comfort. In 2022, this program is going to run in two parallel tracks. One track is a market rate program that's modeled after our successful Solarize campaign. And the other track is providing energy efficiency grants at 100% of the cost to allow participants of our low-income residents to be part of this program. We are focusing on residents that live at 80% or below the area median income and those that might feel the impacts from climate change more acutely. Our market rate program for homeowners is planned to launch in July. I can speak more to that program, as can Amy, if there's questions. But tonight, we really want to focus on this budget request for the low-income resident support. Again, we are requesting that additional appropriation in order to support installation of residents that are at 80% AMI or below. We will be having a primary focus on those that are at 60% and below. Funding support at this level is going to put us on par with other Eastside cities to support residents that really face the greatest energy burdens and those most in need of cooling during extreme heat events. Our goal is to have this component of the program fully fund installation and up to 20 units of subsidized housing or aging-in-place seniors. The total number of units that we'll be able to fund is really dependent on the unit type, final installation costs, other grants we secure, and incentives that are available from PSE and the Housing Authority. In June, we were able to meet with the Equity Board, as well as the Environmental Board, to talk about this program. We received input on how to structure our communication and marketing to best reach the community, as well as the need to confirm that our affordable housing partner, which is Imagine Housing, is really committed to long-term affordable housing. We are continuing conversations with Imagine Housing to make sure that they will be the best partner for this program. And if we identify that either their units or Imagine Housing as a provider is not the best option, we'll be working with our Human Services team to identify another affordable housing provider. The transition to heat pumps for the initial set of low-income residents is estimated to save approximately 45 metric tons of carbon per year. That's comparable to about taking one car off the road for every two installs. And we are also estimating that the upgrade to heat pumps can save residents somewhere between $160 to $1,500 per year. It's a huge range, depending on the current heating type used in a home, whether the heat pump is used for cooling. In addition, as just mentioned, the heat pumps do provide cooling. So we really see a huge benefit of this program is providing climate resiliency for populations that might be more at risk for our warmer summers. So the options before you tonight is supporting advancement of this budget amendment to council, supporting the advancement of it with modifications, requesting modifications, and that we return to the committee or not supporting advancement of this proposal to council. Then again, before you is the recommendation that we have to amend the Sustainability Fund for $125,000 so we can implement the low-income component of our heat pump program. The timing of this program is that we will, if supported by you all, move the proposal to council in July. We are also working on an agreement with a distributor that will be supporting implementation of the program. We'll be able to identify the appropriate units, affordable housing units, for installs by early fall, and then advance those installations in the fall. We are also in conversations with the Eastside Cities to partner on a expansion or continuation of this program in 2023 and beyond. So at this time, I will pause for any questions, as well as feedback on the options before you.
Council President Walsh?
Thank you. Excited to talk about this. So you've proposed exploring a partnership with Imagine Housing. So can you tell me more about that? Does that mean that all of the up to 20 heat pumps would go to Imagine Housing residents? Or would other people be able to apply, and this is just focusing on that? What's the proposal?
Yeah, at this time, the cities have been talking about partnering with Imagine Housing because they are the one affordable housing provider that has units across all five cities. And Imagine Housing has a long-term relationship with each of those cities. They've been very interested in this program and willing to work with us. That's not to say that there aren't other affordable housing providers that might be interested. We thought working this first year with Imagine Housing could be beneficial to work through the program, make sure that there is interest, and then ideally, next year, we would expand to other housing providers. I think we're also interested at looking at other members of our community that might feel the impacts of heat events, as well as could use the energy efficiency upgrades in their homes. And so that is part of our partnership with Hope Link, is identifying individual homes where we might also consider working with members of the community.
So with identifying those individual homes, is that for a potential future idea? It wouldn't be included in this initial 20?
It could be included in this initial 20. Yes. So that's something we'll be exploring, just to make sure it's the right fit for this program.
Okay, okay. How would residents be selected? You know, are we asking for applications? Is it just Imagine Housing saying, hey, I've got 20 people lined up? What's the idea there?
Yeah, that's a great question. We've been having a lot of conversations about that and don't quite have all those details worked out. I think a lot of it will depend... Once we have our partnership with the distributor of the program, they'll be coming out to assess the different housing complexes. And some of them will be primed for heat pumps. Others may not be the right type of housing complex for a heat pump. So it'll be part of an ongoing conversation with both the installers, as well as Imagine Housing, to make sure we're identifying the right units. But, yeah.
Okay. And let's see, last question. Given kind of where you listed out the information about the Sustainability Fund budget, with lots of budget left and all of that, would it be possible to scale this program up? What are the limitations in this first year? Why did you suggest the 125,000?
Yeah, I thought that would be a good number for us to test this initial install. Some of Imagine Housing's complexes are in around the 15 to 20 units that we thought might be best suited for heat pump installs this year, based on conversations with Imagine Housing. So having that as an initial opportunity this year, seeing how it goes, and if there's interest from other affordable housing providers and individuals, then we could definitely scale up. I think this amount is also about on par with what some of the other cities were considering as an initial year to see how effective this program is, mostly in terms of interest and finding the right units.
Okay, those are my questions. Councilmember Ray?
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. And thanks for this. This is great. So first question is, I understand there are... I'm learning lots. Ductless and central ducted heat pumps. Are we envisioning all ductless or some central, or what's the mix we're contemplating?
Yeah, I'll do an initial answer and then see if Amy wants to jump in. I think for the affordable housing, we will likely be looking at just the ductless. Those, and Amy can correct me if I'm wrong, are usually in the $5,000 to $8,000 range. The ducted are closer to the $15,000 to $25,000 range. And especially because of the types of homes we might be working with for the low-income component and the Imagine Housing infrastructure, the ducted would be the appropriate heat pump. Amy, anything that you want to add? You have a lot more experience with this program in other parts of the Northwest.
Yeah, Stacy is exactly right. I hope everyone can hear me. Ductless heat pumps are a more common solution for folks. The main reasons that you would pursue a ducted central forced air system is if you were already an owner of a very strong ducted system. And it turns out that not many people are. Even if you have an existing ducted system, it's pretty leaky. The best threshold for using a ducted heat pump system is about 6%. And on average, homes are about 25% leaky, or rather, 25% retention of the heat. And so that way, ductless heat pumps are... Sorry, there's a little bit of an echo, so my apologies. Ductless heat pumps are just a general better solution for homes, regardless of the home configuration and the existing heating fuel type. So also based on the budget constraints, using a ductless system to add to these multifamily home retrofits would probably be the better solution. So yeah, those are the main differences between the two technologies, and why ductless would be a preferred solution.
That's great. Thank you very much. You anticipated my second question, which was how much is it going to cost? Now, our proposal is to cover the cost of installation only and not the heat pumps themselves, or is it both?
It would be 100% of the cost for the low-income.
All right. And what's installation typically cost?
I think overall, Amy, again, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the overall cost that we've been seeing for some of the ducted systems is around that $5,000 to $10,000.
And so that's all in?
That would be, yeah, we'd be hoping to fully cover that.
All right, great. And then, final question is, do you envision this as... Because I do, the first year of a multi-year program? Or, and this is sort of piloting, figuring out what we're doing and how we're going to do it, and working out kinks?
Yeah, absolutely. That is the hope. The Eastside Cities have been talking quite a bit about continuing this program on. Both sides add the low-income, as well as the market rate program, as well as expanding it. We've been talking about considering other energy efficiency incentives that we can provide to the community. So that is the hope, to really scale up and expand.
I really love the idea of heat pumps, particularly after the last two days, and the fact that they give you the, you know, the heat in the winter and the cooling in the summer. And I like the idea also very much of kind of focusing on at-risk elderly populations who really do need to have things cool in the summer and warm in the winter. So thank you for this.
Yeah, I think the only thing I would add about the cost is that Stacy's number, I think, is after the utility incentives. So the cost on the invoice might be a little bit higher than that. There's also electrical costs. So potentially, there may be some folks who will need electrical upgrades to their panel in order to accommodate the addition of a heat pump. So that, at times, can add $1,000 to $3,000, which we would hope to cover with these funds. But also, there have been other programs where we have the resident take on that cost. So it's just a matter of program design decision. And then, lastly, if we're doing the installations on multifamily housing units, the amount of refrigerant line may be increased. So for ductless systems, there's an indoor unit and an outdoor unit connected by a refrigerant line that carries the cooling solution between the two. And if you're in a multi-story or in a strange configuration, you know, there may be more of that required. And it's not an obscene amount. I think it's about $15 per extra foot of refrigerant line. But it's just another way that the cost can potentially increase for these low-income installations.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I have a few more questions. One is, as Council President Walsh mentioned, there is a lot of funding in the Sustainability Funds, and that is detailed in our staff report. I wondered, if you could tell me what the rate of accrual is approximately in terms of how much money per year is going into that fund and expected to be going into that fund over the next couple of years?
Yeah, I did not have finance run that number because we, I believe, are going to be in discussions about that rate. So I'll see if City Administrator Edwards could address that.
Councilmember Hunt, members of the committee, good evening. It's about $800,000 a year, my recollection. We are working on the 2023-24 budget right now. Our intent is to put forward a budget that spends the entire amount annually. The council's made it very clear you'd like to see that happen. We are, I think, fortunately passing the pandemic pause that we had on all of this, so we're moving forward with that. I think we'll look to spend the fund balance judiciously. There'll be monies allocated in '23 for this program, additionally, which the council will consider as part of the annual budget process. So I think both the items you're hearing tonight, I think, signal we're in gear now to start tackling these things programmatically.
Great, thank you. Second question is, there's other cities in the program with Spark Northwest. Are there other program versions of this for specifically low-income housing? Or is that unique to our approach?
There are other cities within the Eastside City group that do have a low-income housing approach. And then also, heat pump campaigns that are emerging across the region. Seattle has had a very strong focus on low-income. And particularly, they focused on oil conversion to heat pumps, since they're still dealing with a lot of oil heating. King County is just starting to initiate their program, and they're planning to focus in low-income areas in particular. And then I know Amy is working with other cities across the state that are looking to launch programs. And I think some of them, as I understand, are trying to figure out exactly what their low-income or equity piece will be. But she could address that further.
Yeah, there's a lot of different configurations for what the equity component can look like. And we try to tailor that to the community that we work in. So for the Eastside Cities, this was the best opportunity to actually make sure those extra funds are spent because it's one thing to fundraise for the equity component, but then actually making sure that it's taken advantage of. For example, in some Southern Oregon campaigns, we've been able to set aside some buy-down funds for tribal participants exclusively. So doing a separate educational webinar for them and ensuring that their housing authority can distribute funds related to the heat pump installation and electrical upgrades. We always try to have a program-wide discount for all participants, but the program will target outreach to seniors and manufactured homeowners. Like Stacy mentioned, there's a King County RFP that's open right now that we hope to submit by the end of the week, where they'll be paying like 90% to 100% cost coverage for up to 150 installations is their goal. So it's quite significant. And there's many others that we're considering with cities, like Stacy said, where we're not so sure what the equity component may look like for a number of reasons, whether it's lack of funding or just the actual target population that we want to benefit. So we want to be sure that those things match up. And that's just a small window into the different program designs that we have considered.
Great, thank you. And then last question. What are the plans for following up on how successful this is, how well-received customer satisfaction, those sorts of things?
Yeah, that's a great question. I know Spark Northwest does track a lot of metrics for this program. I don't believe that we've talked about any further follow-up, six months, 12 months after the fact. But that's something we could definitely build into the program. Yeah, I think the rest, probably the Eastside Cities, would be very interested in doing that.
Yeah, and I think I can provide some examples of what we're potentially considering, especially if you all have ideas on what would be most helpful for you to justify funding this in the future. So when we follow up with folks about their cost savings, it's an estimated number. You know, we don't belabor them with additional repeated surveys in the future. We just provide one at the end that says, you know, how was your experience with the installer? Did we make the right selection? Are you satisfied with your purchase? And most times, people are very thrilled to share how much more comfortable they are and how much money they've saved. For this particular program, we have the benefit of the shared resources of the Eastside Cities. So one example that we've already been able to reap the benefit of is the McDonald Miller HVAC consultants that have a very strong relationship with the city of Bellevue. So they've been able to make some connections between Imagine Housing and Puget Sound Energy. And I think that relationship can continue so that maybe we may have more accurate measurements for how much energy people are spending, as well as potential cost savings, since I think Imagine Housing has some kind of connection to either bill assistance or just an eye on what folks are spending their money on. So those are a couple of ways where we can measure the success of this program. But because it's a pilot, we're pretty open-minded to what success means. I think from the Spark Northwest perspective, having done this for so many years, a pilot is really an opportunity to demonstrate creativity. And I think that exists in this program. And we want to be a model for the many other municipalities that are hoping to replicate this program or bring it to their own city. So I think one measure of success that isn't as explicit is just the ability to implement program ideas that are a little bit newer and being able to have the reflection on where things can be improved for next iterations for not only the Eastside Cities, but the many other regions that are keeping an eye on this program.
Thank you, Amy. So just to clarify a little bit on that, do you provide, then, a report back to the city based on those surveys and based on, you know, your take on how it went and your lessons learned? Would you provide that at the end, or six months later?
Currently, there's a monthly report that goes to the cities. So that provides an update on just the progress of the campaign, but also like lessons learned about different decisions that we've made and also different conversations we've been having about program design. So that alone has already provided a lot of reflection for a repeated program. And then at the end, there's a final report that talks about the specific numbers. So how many people came to our workshops? How many folks within those workshops actually moved on to a site assessment and then were able to install units? I think that the distributor relationship here will be very useful. Similar to Seattle, they have a very robust tracking system for the size of the units that they install for people, the cost of those, who got the incentive and all of that. So that existing infrastructure will be really useful for us to take advantage of to be able to have a very strong understanding of how this program went by the numbers.
Okay, great. So is that in the distributor agreement already with it?
Yes, we are working on the distributor agreement. That'll be coming to council July 18. But we do have the reporting requests or what will become requirements for the distributor.
Okay, great, thank you. That was my last question. Do we have any additional questions? I'm not seeing any. So I will, at this point, call for public comment on this item. And I'll check in with the city clerk if there's anyone on the line that might wish to give public comment. And if there is, I have some guidelines to read.
Councilmember Hunt, there is no members of the public in attendance at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we will move into committee recommendation on this item. Would either of you like to kick us off? Council President Walsh?
Yeah, great. Completely support this. I love this. This checks so very many boxes. It helps us spend down our budget. It helps with equity. It helps bring people up into a safer environment with cooling. It helps with our climate direction. Gosh, if you could design five other programs like this that check all the various different boxes, great. I'm all for it. Generally, I would say I'm fine with the idea of starting with Imagine Housing because it applies to all of the various cities. And I like that for streamlining the program and learning. But I am interested in really looking at ways that we can expand this outside of one individual set of units, mostly because that very small risk that if they were to sell the place off or there was an emergency that caused it... the place off or there was an emergency that caused it to have problems, it would be putting all of our eggs into one basket. And so I'd look at possibilities of other options for the future, but I can understand why a pilot would be designed in this way. And then the other piece is, I would love to see this expanded. And so really, my question is to the administration is, do we have the scope and the ability to do so both financially and programmatically? And if so, I like the idea of expanding it, but I also recognize that we're about to come into a budget season where that could be a more appropriate proposal, so.
Thank you, Council President Walsh. We're doing this this week. You know, I think part of our challenge is that we have community members very impatient on the Climate Action Plan. So do we go, do we go meaningful and deep on a few programs, or do we go thin and wide on many programs? And so I think our, our sense is to stay focused on the staff resources. Right now, we have one full-time staff person. I would imagine you will hear from the administration a proposal for additional staff support for next year. So I think we just have to balance what we can get done. The council's made it very clear, don't put stuff in the budget and not get it done. So we want to put stuff in the budget that we have, the staff resources, other resources to get done. So if this is successful, we'll continue to fund it, but I think we want to be mindful to the pressure we're getting from the community that says we'd like the entire Climate Action Plan completed next week, please. So that's difficult.
Yeah, that sounds about right. Next week, sounds good. That was exactly the response I was looking for, so that makes sense from affordability and staff resource. Thank you.
Councilmember Ray?
Thank you. I too think this is a really great idea, and it's a great use of the Sustainability Fund. I think it's a, you know, I'm just going to sound a lot like the council president. It does a lot of things that we care a lot about. It helps out those who are neediest in our community. It helps with reducing the carbon footprint, and I also would like to see this expand. I think the number seems right to me since we only have a half a year left in this half a year to spend it this year, so it seems right to me. But I think there's going to be some great learning, and I'm a big fan of trying stuff and learning from it, and I'm hopeful that we see something coming forward next year that expands on this program and is even better because it's learned some lessons from, from this go-round. So, so thank you.
Great, thank you. I have similar thoughts to my fellow committee members. I'm in support. I don't have any substantive requests for changes. I, I think the information gathering, the assessment piece is really critical because this is a pilot, and to take the next step, that information will be very useful. So I would be interested to see that information back and to make sure that it does collect the information we would need to expand the program once that decision is, comes before council again. And so one, one other thought, though, is that with a lot of our programs for low-income residents, especially if we do expand this, is just making sure that the word gets out and that it gets out in a, in a way that the people who need this program most are aware of it and able to access it. Twenty, at 20 units, that's not very much, and I understand that that's appropriate for a pilot, but just to be mindful on the communication strategy, were we to expand, and maybe we can start thinking about that now, to make sure that the word is getting out to those who will need this program most, and then that we are following up to make sure that the program is, is received in the way that we imagine it will be, is also, I think, important for us to confirm directly from those residents who, who are, who receive these services. So those would be my, my considerations. I think the program is great. I think it's great that we can work with some other cities. It also seems like other cities are considering this, so it'd be great to get the word out and explain our, our, how it goes in our city to those other cities so they can benefit from that and potentially use that to start their own programs. And, yeah, I think this is a great example of the city following through on our commitments in the Climate Action Plan and taking the lead, and I appreciate it a lot, and no further changes that I'd say at this point. So I think we can, direction needed, we can, if it's helpful, we can vote to put this forward, and then I also wondered if it would be helpful to make a suggestion of where on the agenda, so whether, whether it's on consent or regular business.
Recommendation for consent.
Okay, so are we comfortable with recommending that this go to the consent calendar for council? Councilmember Ray?
Yeah, just really quickly, I think that's absolutely appropriate, and it would be very good because this is an important thing we're doing, and climate action is important. So maybe just a little bit more on the committee report during committee reports, say this is, you know, this is what we talked about, and this is what it is, and this is why we think it's such a good idea, and not that you wouldn't do that, but it's such a super idea.
Yes, great point, and I will definitely do that. Anything further? Okay, then, all those in favor of advancing this for consideration of the regular council and that this be on, of the, of the full council and that this be on the consent calendar, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, so that, that passes with that recommendation from the committee.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you so much for Amy, for joining us tonight and sharing all that information.
All right, so I, do you have everything you need on that item? We can move to the next. All right, then we will move to the second and final item on our agenda this evening, which is ID 1188, Issaquah Clean Buildings Initiative.
Great, well, thank you again for this presentation. I'm joined by Jen Davis Hayes. We'll be tag teaming a bit of the presentation this evening. So tonight, we are here requesting, again, another amendment to the Sustainability Fund for $100,000 for an Issaquah Clean Buildings Initiative. As shared in the earlier presentation, buildings are one of the most rapidly growing sources of greenhouse gas emissions in Washington State, and working to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in existing buildings and homes is often a challenging area. The administration is seeking this appropriation to fund an Issaquah Clean Building Initiative. The investment will help advance our progress towards the Climate Action Plan target of reducing energy use in existing buildings. Jen, I will pass it over to you to provide a bit of history on the Clean Buildings Act.
I gotta mute, sorry about that. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Jen Davis Hayes, Economic Development Manager, and I would love to have been there tonight, but I am without transportation, so I'm joining you to talk about this amazing program that Stacy has put together, and we are working very closely with her with economic development. So as she mentioned, energy use in existing businesses and homes is the largest greenhouse gas contributor in Issaquah. So what, so the solution to cutting building emissions lies in energy efficiency. It's the fastest and cheapest way to cut carbon emissions and other harmful pollution. So the state's Clean Building Performance Standard is designed to secure this energy efficiency opportunity. They passed this Clean Building Standards in 2019, and it has requirements for energy efficiency for covered commercial buildings, is what they call them, for anything that is 50,000 square feet or above. So this includes private buildings, municipal and public buildings, nonprofits, and places of worship. That, the law does not cover multifamily hotels or places of residency. So the timeline for compliance varies by building size with reporting requirements in advance. So while they may need to be, so that means basically if they may need to meet that deadline in 2026, they have to actually report that prior. The, and in addition, for the reporting, they need to report to the state regularly, even if they are in compliance. And we, you know, we think there's some buildings in Issaquah that may already be there or close to there. Penalties do exist depending on the size of the building and how much out of compliance they are, whether it's with reporting or the energy efficiency. In 2022, the legislative session, they amended to include buildings 20,000 or greater as well as multifamily. So the rules that they're working for these requirements are underway and expected to be completed in, in December of 2023. Next slide, thank you. So along with the passage of these standards, the state also authorized $75 million for energy incentives for early adopters of the Clean Building Standards. And these funds are available for those that must be in compliance with the Clean Building Standards, but also those without those requirements, such as multifamily. So, you know, working in economic development, people often ask us for incentives, and I see this, this program as a real win-win for not only our, our commercial property owners, but also our environment and our businesses long, in the long run. The funds for this incentive are on a first-come, first-served basis until they're gone. So, you know, some cities already started the program to take advantage of these opportunities, and there's other programs out there that are looking at how to help commercial buildings meet these, including King County has a program called C-Pacer. It's a loan program where you pay back the loan based on your energy savings, and Puget Sound Energy actually is initiating a Clean Buildings Accelerator program, and that's really more focused on building the long-term capacity of compliance with these standards. So they're going to form some cohorts of building owners and managers and, you know, help them understand what the compliance is required and what process for reporting ongoing. So it's something that's completely complimentary to what we're going to be talking about tonight, and we already are talking about cross-promotional and referrals to each program. So I'm going to pass it on to Stacy to unveil the program details.
Great, thanks, Jen. Great, so the funding we are requesting this evening is to support an 18-month initial program with the possibility for expansion. In order to support our businesses in energy efficiency upgrades and take available of the state incentives, the city is proposing to develop a program that's modeled after the city of Bellevue's successful relationship and program that they've had with McDonald Miller. The city of Issaquah would partner with a service provider to walk through the requirements of the Clean Building Standards, support access to incentives and loans, and complete the mandatory reporting for those working to come into compliance, as well as for those that are already in compliance. Following broad and individual outreach, the city and service provider would cover the following steps. We would do the benchmarking for the buildings, which determines the current energy use in the building. We would compare the current energy use to the target that is needed to come into compliance. We would complete a scoping assessment to identify the improvements that are needed in the building to come into compliance. Incentives and loan information would be provided, and where appropriate, support for applying for those. And then the building owner and the service provider would work together to cover and complete the requirements, or excuse me, the improvements. The city and service provider would support compliance reporting and other needs that are necessary to complete the compliance. Based on information that we retained from the Department of Commerce, as well as further staff review, we are estimating there are around 50 to 80 buildings in Issaquah that meet the threshold for reporting to the state under the current law, and an additional 70 to 80 buildings that may be eligible for energy efficiency upgrade incentives and loans. We do need to complete further analysis of the data. So why are we interested in expanding this program to Issaquah if compliance is required under state law? This program has the opportunity to provide direct marketing outreach and support early compliance for all building types. It can also support reducing the number of buildings that may choose not to comply and instead pay penalties. There's an opportunity to exceed compliance requirements, as well as to go above and beyond by working with interested businesses on decarbonization or clean energy strategies, which may not be considered if building owners and managers choose to go through this program on their own. This program will also provide support for our own municipal buildings, as well as other public buildings, nonprofit entities that might need to come into compliance but may lack the resources to do so. It supports our community in taking advantage of limited incentives and loan programs for energy efficiency upgrades. It demonstrates that the city is a partner with the public, as well as private entities, in meeting our climate action targets. We did have an opportunity to meet with both, with the Environmental Board, as well as Vision Partners and the Economic Vitality Commission about this program. Vision Partners and the Economic Vitality Commission were supportive of advancing this program. The Environmental Board discussed in particular whether the city should require above and beyond aspect to this program to be a participant. They did not feel that that was necessary. They felt it's an opportunity to really engage businesses and building owners in ICAP implementation and support efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. They were concerned about, by adding additional barriers to the program, we may not maximize involvement. They noted that building owners are already needing to invest significant funds in energy efficiency upgrades, and any additional requirements would make it more expensive for their participation. And then they also noted that many buildings are already exceeding the energy efficiency standards by being a participant in this program, as has been demonstrated in Bellevue. Board members also had some ideas about how to make this program more unique to Issaquah, such as working with particular building owners, such as the school district, on advancing opportunities for clean energy. Those are opportunities that we'll explore with a service provider if, if this program's So tonight, we're asking whether there is support to advance this request to council, whether there is support but request for modification, if there is support to make modifications and return for further discussion, or if the committee does not support advancement of this request. The administration's recommendation is that the committee recommends the budget amendment to the Sustainability Fund for $100,000 to implement the Clean Buildings Initiative. If supported, tonight, we will move this proposal to council in July. We will move forward our contracting with the service provider this summer, and then initiate the program in early fall. After the, or towards the end of the 18-month program, we will do evaluation and determine whether or not the program should continue. So the direction needed tonight is whether we should proceed with bringing the additional appropriation request of $100,000 from the Sustainability Fund to council. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. On the proposal, the Clean Buildings slide where you've got the series of seven boxes, I should probably know this, but I don't. So the service provider is the entity that we would contract with?
That's correct, yes.
So where it says down at the bottom, it says city funding supports, and it, it points to the two boxes, but we're really kind of providing support for all of them because we're paying for the service provider?
We would put funding into the outreach component of the program and then helping to supplement the scoping assessments. The service provider would actually cover the cost of benchmarking and submitting paperwork and all of those aspects. And then the building owner would be paying for the actual improvement.
Yeah, okay. And so, and then the paperwork at the end, that submission, that's the service provider that they're doing under our contract? So you were going to say something?
Under our contract, but the city would not be paying for that aspect of work.
Okay. So does $100,000 include our outreach activities and the scoping assessment, or is that something in addition to using staff resources, or how's, how's that break down?
Yeah, the $100,000 would cover a portion, would cover the city's full contribution to outreach. We estimate around $5,000 to $10,000 is about what is needed. The service provider would also be covering costs for outreach and marketing, and then it would cover the cost of scoping assessments. We estimated for around 25 to 30 buildings that we'd be able to cover with those costs. And then there'll be some staff time on top of it, but that would be, all of the $100,000 would go just towards those two items.
Just the outreach and the scoping?
The outreach and scoping, that's correct. And then the service provider- And then the service provider is covering the costs for the other items without payment from the city.
Okay, I'm being slow tonight, I'm sorry. Is the, so who's paying the service provider?
They're doing that in kind, because ultimately, they hope to win the contracts for doing some of the improvements.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense. So we're, this, we're not contracting with the service provider, they're a completely external entity, they're doing this because they're looking for the long-term benefit from it. We are going to contract with someone to help with outreach and the scoping?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and it's an 18-month service contract with some entity that'll do those two, two things for us?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, makes perfect sense, I got it now, thank you.
Yes. Yeah.
Council President Walsh? So if what we're paying for is outreach and the assessment scoping, is it possible that a business is going to come into this, and they're going to get their benchmark, and they're going to get an assessment, and then they're not going to make the actual energy improvements?
That is a potential. I think what the service provider will show is the benefit payback from those energy assessment improvements, as well as education around the penalties.
Okay, but we're doing this in advance of when the penalties would come into effect because we're trying to get early adopter status?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So, let's see, you already answered how many buildings that would cover. When you talked about the school district at the end, you hadn't mentioned that that was one of the buildings that would qualify. Does, do the school buildings, because they're over 50,000 square feet, are they required to come into compliance with the same timeframe?
That's correct, yes, they are. I think I might have been a little confusing to bring in that point, it was some suggestions from the Environmental Board, maybe just to think about unique opportunities of working with the school district and trying to encourage them to go further in thinking about renewable energy or other aspects. But yes, they are, I can't remember how many of their buildings are required to be in compliance, but it's a number of them that are triggered by the state law.
And obviously, we're only looking at the school district buildings that are within the City of Issaquah?
Correct, yes.
Yeah. Okay, and how would buildings be chosen for this program considering it's limited? Is it based on impact or first-come, first-served? Is there a lottery?
Yeah, I think there is an opportu, depending on interest, there's, there's an opportunity to set some prioritization of buildings, where we could be working first with municipal buildings, and then with those anticipated to be furthest from compliance, and then those that are 50,000 and greater, and then opening it up to others. My understanding from the Bellevue program that there hasn't been such a flood of interest where their service provider is overwhelmed with requests, they've been able to work with all of the interested building owners, or stagger out the work with them to a point that was satisfying. But we could definitely set some prioritization standards if we expect a great amount of interest in the first couple of months.
Okay, and then you've also mentioned the municipal buildings. So in an email that Councilmember Hunt sent, you had replied and said, "Well, municipal buildings, yes, they're going to have to come into compliance, but we wouldn't actually be taking any of this money for those assessments," because, did you say that's covered by Department of Commerce?
Yeah, my understanding, this is just information I learned this afternoon, is the scoping assessment that would be done with the municipal buildings is actually covered through Department of Commerce's ESCO program, Energy Service Provider Program. So we would not need to pay for that, it would already be covered. We were not intending for these funds to be applied towards the actual improvements, because those would likely use up that funding very quickly. So I don't actually anticipate any of this funding would need, be needed for municipal buildings because of that other opportunity with Commerce.
Okay, but then there's, obviously, if we run the assessment and we get a sense of what the municipal needs are, we will have a budget ask, not only because that's something that our community would want, but because at a certain date, we will have to come into compliance.
Yes, absolutely, yep.
Okay, those are my questions, thanks. Councilmember Ray?
Just a quick follow-up, and I was just kind of triggered by Council President Walsh's comment. You talked about the number of buildings, but because we're staggering in the due date for them based on the size, how many buildings over 220,000 square feet do we have in town, roughly?
That is a good question, and Jen, I know, did a further scrub of the data. I don't know if it was just a small handful that were over that 220. I do have the spreadsheet pulled up, but worried I'll mess up the presentation, Jen might be able to look at that very quickly. But that's something we could also consider in the prioritization, is that stagger deadline for when compliance is required, if that was of interest.
Yeah, I, you know, it's hard to, for me to even guess what, you know, I'm guessing like the new Costco buildings are probably over 220, but, you know, is Target? You know, so I just, I just don't even, in my mind, I can't even know what that looks like.
Yeah. I don't know, Jen, if you're able to pull that up?
Yeah, just let me sort. You know, the, when I think about some large buildings, so Target is 115, according to King County records, so 115,000, so we're not looking at over 220. Lowe's is a little bit bigger than that. The 90 East buildings, which are over, by Siemens, which Costco and Microsoft lease, those are over 220. So those are, those are probably our largest buildings, the ones that would come under. And then, I don't know right offhand what the new Costco one is, that they're building right now, so I'm assuming that they would, you know, be building to the standards, and would then just need to report rather than comply by that time.
Yeah, no, that's really helpful, thanks.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, I had some questions, there's similar vein to Councilmember Ray's questions about how this works. So if, if we were not to do this program, and the, what would the workflow look like with the service provider? I imagine they would still work with a business to do this benchmarking, and so would, what's the alternative for a business if we weren't to do this? And what's the cost difference?
Yeah, that's a great question. The first part I can answer, I think businesses would be going through this process themselves. Many of them probably are, sorry, not businesses, but building owners. Many of them may not be aware of the state standard, they may have gotten a letter from Department of Commerce, don't know how it applies to them, so may end up missing the deadline completely and not, or, and/or not taking advantage of incentive dollars. They would have to go through this process on their own and work with their own service provider, or find a service provider to do this work. So I anticipate it would take much longer, they'll miss opportunities for incentives, and probably not be in a good position to exceed those standards. Where if we, with the service provider that we're working with, if we can get in early, talk about other advantages of exceeding standards, bring in other potential components to the program, to talk to them about further greenhouse gas reductions, there's a great opportunity that we can get them to go above and beyond just through this partnership.
Okay, and so we know the cost to us of participating in this program, and the service provider in this case pays those steps. Would the service provider still pay for those steps if the, if the city were not to fund the partial outreach and the scoping assessment?
Yeah, that's a great question, I would probably need to check in with them. I would anticipate that the building owner would need to cover the cost of the service provider for the benchmarking comparison, obviously the scoping, that that is not necessarily a service that would be provided. That was something that was really unique to the Bellevue program, and another advantage of participating in this program. But that's something I could reach out to a couple of service providers and check on that.
Yeah, I think the question would be also, what's the cost difference? If, so if you could reach out and figure that out, that would help me sort of understand what's the benefit. So, and I understand now that municipal buildings not covered in a different program, so I think that's also not a benefit of this program anymore, because that's already covered, and that would be covered, there's no cost difference to whether we do this program or not for that municipal building issue.
I would say the opportunity here is that we would have a service provider that would work through this process with us to come into compliance, while the actual cost of the scoping assessment might be covered. We don't necessarily have a service provider that'll take us through this step-by-step and ensure that we're in alignment. What the Commerce dollars, as I understand it, will do is cover that cost of the scoping assessment, so that's not coming out of our $100,000.
Okay, so I think, I think similarly, it would be good to know what's the benefit then to the city versus doing this a different way, because we would have, we have to come into compliance as well, we would have to work with the service provider. Would there be a cost difference? Just trying to, trying to understand what is actually the cost difference would be helpful for me.
Councilmember Hunt? If I may, I've actually worked in a city that's had this requirement, and a city that I worked in, this was not a state requirement, it was a local requirement. And so I have, I can tell you what the experience was with property owners, is that there is a percentage that are happy to do this, there's other percentage that have no interest in doing this. And so what we have presented for you here in Issaquah is a way to kind of take them by the hand and make this as easy as possible, that they see through a good service provider that this is something that the cost associated can be paid back through saving, energy savings, and to get compliance. So the city is proposing to invest the dollars we are tonight to get compliance to reduce the carbon emissions. If we were to do nothing else, and a business owner would see a flyer or not see a flyer, then it may not ever happen. The State of Washington, at some point, is going to have to go through compliance, and my guess is the number of compliance officials that are available in the State of Washington to work on this project are probably limited. So what we're saying as a community through our Climate Action Plan is this is very important, and we're willing to put our money where our convictions are, so that in a relatively, hopefully, short period of time, we'll get high compliance by making it very easy for Issaquah businesses to do this. If you're located in some other community, it would not be easy, you would have difficulty, because we, in Evanston, you know, had businesses, even after we had had programs and webinars and all of that, still saying, "I don't understand, I can't figure this out." And so what we didn't do in Evanston is have this third party, the city staff, had to do all of this. By having that third party available to do this, we suspect will be quicker. But what we get out of this is fewer carbon emissions, that's what we get out of this investment. Because these buildings, even though there's a state requirement, may never do it.
Okay, thank you, that, that's also helpful, and thank you for sharing the other city experience, I think that's useful context. I still, I still just, the reason for my questions is really to understand how it works versus the alternatives for businesses, as well as for the city, so that, that's really the, the reason, just to understand how it's working. Okay, so then, a couple more questions, one is, there was a discussion about potentially prioritizing the, the buildings that are most out of compliance. And so how would that work, I guess, because that requires information about that those buildings are out of compliance? So I, I'm just wondering how in practice we could do that? And I also wondered a little bit more about the rationale for that in particular, and I, yeah.
Yeah, that's just one option, I think that's available, based on what Bellevue has been doing, and they're doing it by looking at, I believe, the year the building was built is one of the considerations, and then doing estimates for where their energy use might be. So that's just one example of how Bellevue's done some prioritization. They have more in the range of 400-plus buildings that need to come into compliance, so they've been really trying to figure out where to focus.
And Stacy, can I ask, or clarification? Is the incentive only for certain businesses or buildings that are a certain percentage or certain difference from where they should be? So if, you know, that would also help to make sure that we allow our commercial buildings to get that access to that incentive program, rather than as Administrator Bobkowitz mentioned, they may just never do it if they don't have the resources to do it?
Yeah, thanks Jen. Okay, so the, the information would be from the businesses themselves as far, I mean, so you would have the year of the building, that would probably be available to the city, but the other information about issues with how far out of compliance, would that be, need to be provided by the building owner?
We, I don't know if I can completely answer that, I do know we have initial information from Department of Commerce, and then some of the service providers we've talked to have access to a lot more detailed information that they're able to, to get through their own databases, it's not public information. So that's why we would want to work with the service provider to do further scrubbing of the data, because several of them have indicated they have more information, but...
And Councilmember Hunt, I think that there are just some easy benchmarks, the older the building is and the bigger the building is. If it's an older building and it's big, it's generally producing carbon emissions using older technology, so I think that's the, the low-hanging fruit. And I think as we've kind of clicked through some of the larger buildings we've already identified, obviously, a brand-new Costco headquarters is not one we're going to be calling, because high likelihood they're fine. A Target, that's, I don't know, you all have been here, I mean, let's say 25 years old, at the size that it is, probably is worth a phone call. So I think that will be, I mean, we'll use the other measures as we can get them, but I think we'll start with size and age and go from there. Again, the whole point of this is to reduce the carbon emissions, so if we can pick off the larger, older buildings first, chances are, we're going to get more emissions eliminated.
Okay, yes, thank you. And then, when this has been implemented in other cities, Bellevue, for example, do you have a sense, or is there data on how, so there's data about the average compliance, how, how much above the average they are, but I'm wondering just, what's the rate of buildings that actually go through with the improvements to come into compliance at all from the program?
That's something I could definitely find out, they initiated the program just in December or January, so I know they've taken a number of buildings through the initial steps and are starting to work on scoping assessments and implementation, but I can find out kind of a percentage of uptake from that.
Okay. Those are my questions at this time. Do you have any additional questions? All right. I will check in with the city clerk if there is anyone who has come onto our virtual meeting that might want to make a comment on this item.
Councilmember Hunt, we have no virtual attendees.
All right, thank you very much, and I'll also note that there is nobody here in council chambers that would give us a comment in person, so we will, with that, move into our committee recommendation on this item. Councilmember Ray?
I'll go first, I actually like this program a lot, once I kind of understood kind of all the roles and responsibilities, who's who and who's doing what. There are two things that I like, I think that are the most significant benefits. One is if we can get people motivated to move and become early adopters, particularly some of these older, less conforming buildings, and they're eligible for some of the subsidies and supports, I think that's, that's good for our local businesses, because they're going to have to come into compliance at some point. The other thing, which is a little more, I think nuanced, is if we can get these buildings to move early, and most of our buildings are going to be in the 2027 and later range, we can pick up an additional, maybe three or four years of them being a low-emission building instead of a high-emission building, and so we are saving, you know, three or four years' worth of additional carbon being pumped into the atmosphere. And I think it's worth the $100,000 to accomplish those two things. One is to get access to the, to the grants, and the other is to reduce our exposure to carbon emissions through that period.
Thank you. Council President Walsh?
Thanks. I'm going to take a different tack on this. I, I love the idea of getting our municipal buildings into compliance early. I love the idea of helping nonprofits comply with the law. But I think there's already a lot of incentives in the tune of $75 million from the state, and a lot of requirements in the tune of a Clean Buildings Act from the state that are going to move the needles on this. I think also, if we're looking at this concept of some of our oldest and biggest buildings that are probably the most out of compliance, you know, Target's going to know the state of Washington laws, and they're going to know how out of compliance they are and how much it's going to take to get them to do the same. Fred Meyer, same idea. I mean, these are larger companies. And I'm just not sure I see the benefit. I mean, especially if I'm comparing this to the heat pump initiative, that's targeting low-income residents of our city, whereas this is really targeting some of the largest businesses in the city. Yes, I'd like to get them into compliance, but I'm not sure that I think our $100K is really going to move the needle on that. I think the $75 million could. But I'm just not sold on that. If you came back to me and said, "I'm going to put $100,000 into getting our municipal buildings up to compliance," I think I would be a lot more interested. So that's, that's where I lie on this. I mean, it's not a huge amount of money, and if the other council members are supportive, I'm fine with it. I just don't see a huge benefit here.
Thank you, Council President Walsh. So I also am wondering, it's, it seems to me that there are a number of possible outcomes from this program, spanning from, that buildings could use this to determine how expensive it is to come into compliance and then not comply early. And then there's also that, that this would drive early compliance. And I would like more information about the success rates from that, from other cities. The average is, is useful, but it doesn't explain to me at least the success rate and, and if they are, like the rate at which the buildings are doing the early compliance. The other piece to me is that some buildings are not required to, some buildings are not falling under this law, but they could use the program. And I wonder if, for those buildings, this, it's sort of opposite of targeting the, the most out of compliance, but for those buildings that don't have to come into compliance, incentivizing them to come into compliance seems like an alternative approach that might be a way to, is a different group, and they, maybe that would also work. So I guess I, not very articulate on this, but I, I question, I don't feel like I have a great sense of what the impact would be, because there seems to be such a range of possible outcomes from this program, unlike, as, you know, in contrast to how I felt the earlier heat pump program, it was very clear what the outcome would be and the sort of scope of impact from that. So that's, I thought, I feel like more information would be helpful, and maybe some alternative structures around who receives this incentive and rationales that we could consider. Councilmember Ray?
Thanks. Just, I think it was, that really interesting points of view on the, on it, too. I just, I, I value that as different perspectives. So I'm, I have a couple thoughts about kind of the next steps and just thinking, I mean, do we want to bring it back? I mean, send Stacy off and Jen off to, you know, provide a few more questions answered? Or, you know, I think that's one certainly reasonable option. The other is to send it off to the full council without a recommendation, too. Anyway, just, I was just kind of thinking about how to, how to move this forward. And I, I don't know that I have a strong feeling one way or the other, but those seem like the paths forward to me.
Council President Walsh?
Yeah, I, I like the idea that you threw out, as far as trying to use this to target buildings that wouldn't necessarily have to come into compliance. To me, that, that gives a little bit more feeling of, oh, this isn't just throwing a nickel on top of a pile of $500 and hoping it makes a difference. It feels like it's putting a dollar out on the sidewalk that somebody might pick up. I, I don't know. The analogies are going too far there. But I like that as a potential idea. I do also have the concerns about whether building owners would choose to use, use this to get a sense of what their potential costs are and then not be ready to make movements. So understanding how the Bellevue program or any other state program is running as far as actually getting the results would be useful.
Okay. So I think, I, I'll check in at this point. Is there a super time crunch on this item?
I'd say the time crunch will be the early adopter incentives. The money that's available now is statewide, first come, first served. So the sooner we get a program up and running to support access is beneficial if, if we choose that direction for the program. There are a number of other cities that are looking at starting this program. So, and there's probably limited service providers, so getting out ahead of that, I think, would be hugely valuable. But say, there's not a couple-week timeline turnaround, but we'd like to start something in the next couple months.
City Administrator?
Would the committee consider having us go back? What I'm hearing from you is, I think, general support conceptually, but questions about implementation and, and prioritization. So if we were to come back, if you would feel comfortable having us put forward this to the council with the direction to make some tweaks to that, put it on regular business on July 18th versus coming back to the committee?
I don't know that we do have kind of a consensus on the path forward. So I, I think that there's a difference of opinion about who, who we want to be serving here and how we want to be serving them. I mean, that's, that's kind of what I was taking away from what Council President was saying. So I think that that's, that's kind of significant. And I'm not, you know, I, I don't know that, if you went and answered all of our questions, if, if we would, would agree on a, a path forward. That's why I, I almost wonder if the path forward is, okay, the committee deliberated, had a good discussion, had some differences of opinion, here's their, here's where they came down, and, and go into the council, might, full council might be the best course of action. I don't know what you all think.
I, I think there's one information, one piece of information that would be helpful for, based on me and Council President Walsh's comments, which is this actual compliance rate from programs that have been established. So I think that would be really helpful. And then, yeah, I do think on the prioritization, it would be helpful to have options, but I don't know that, I think it would be best if this committee were able to consider and make a recommendation towards the council on those options. So I don't know that, I think if we had those options, that could help. I also recognize that this is not, that this is also similar to a pilot in terms of the amount of money that's being put forward. And so, you know, we can learn from this as well going forward. But I, yeah, I, I feel like that piece of information would be helpful for making a recommendation, and also just some options for how to prioritize this to make sure that we have the impact we are setting out to have would be good. So my feeling is that this should come back to our committee before it goes back to council. But Council President Walsh?
Yeah, that was what I was coming down to as well. First of all, to make sure that this in other areas is actually achieving compliance and getting that information, whether, again, it's from the city of Bellevue, which has a very new program, or something else that you can see. And then also providing us with some options of how we would prioritize, and whether there's an option to address some of the buildings that might not need to come into compliance. And then I think we can use that as a conversation to choose between some of those options, make a recommendation to council as far as, this is the path we want you guys to consider, but we're not necessarily in agreement that you should approve this. But it at least gives the scope of things that we've had a conversation about.
Councilmember Ray?
I like it. I mean, let's, let's bet some different options. I mean, I mean, certainly the administration put together some options on how to go forward. So if we can come back with some different options, we can bet them. And, you know, we have a richer set of things to take back to council the next time they meet, we meet. So that, that works for me.
Does that sound like that would work for?
Yep. No, greatly. I appreciate the feedback. And yeah, absolutely, we can put that together.
Okay. That would be helpful. City Administrator Bobkowitz?
Just a question. This is a special meeting of the committee. You have a regular meeting coming up in two, is it next?
July 7th.
It's July 7th? You know, I, my sense is, is that the prioritizations are pretty quick. I mean, we would, we would agree with Council President Walsh tonight. But I don't think that's what the committee wants to do, to, to confirm this on the prioritization piece, to look at those buildings that aren't required, but could, might use this as a, as an incentive. The administration has no objection to that. So that's what we're going to come back with, and I can tell you that this evening. So I think the, the other piece is then just getting information. We may not be able to get information from the state of Washington. The city of Bellevue is the, the community, I believe, that's most progressive. Again, we have a climate action plan. The community has said, "ISQW, we're tired of you following. Why don't you once in a while be out front and, and, and set the pace for these things?" So I'm not sure what state, and we can go back to Evanston, and I can try to get the information. This was a program that was five or six years ago. And we could get the information that will say that, you know, many, many businesses did not want to participate, and the city did not have the ability through the city attorney to litigate against the businesses. And so that would be the information that we would find. We could try to put all this together for next week in order to keep this moving, because I think our concern is, we want to be out front. We want ISQW businesses to have an edge that other businesses in King County don't have, and other businesses in the state of Washington don't have. That's the reason we're here this evening. So I think there's a reluctance to, to drag this out. Obviously, the summertime, if we needed to come back to you at an August meeting, we could do that, and then try to, to start this in September or October. But we are hearing from residents all the time, gee whiz city, why aren't you doing, getting this climate action plan going? And so I apologize if you're hearing frustration from me this evening, but here is an opportunity for us to be a leader in the state. We happen to have a good partner in Bellevue, also being a leader in the state. We want to provide this leadership to our businesses. So we can agree this evening to change the prioritization per the suggestion of Council President Walsh. We could come back then next week, and we'll spend the next couple of days looking for national examples outside the state of Washington for compliance. So if those are the two pieces of information you're looking at, we can then come back. It's a single-item agenda for the committee, the next iteration of Title 18. That would then allow it to be on the council's agenda for July 18th, I think. City Clerk, I think the timing wouldn't be too significant. But again, we hear the council, and the council is telling us nearly every day, we are tired of following. We don't want to go on the Redmond website every week to see what Redmond's doing. We want Redmond to go on the ISQW website and see what ISQW is doing. And I think this is a program that accomplishes that. So, Madam Chair, if you're comfortable with us coming back next week with the program priorities pursuant to Council President Walsh's suggestion, we'll do our level best to chat with our colleagues around the country to see what compliance information we can find, and we'll have that for you at your meeting next week.
Councilmember Ray?
Thanks. I just want to get some clarity. So is the, what, what you're suggesting, City Administrator, is we won't spend the $100,000 on outreach and that nice graph that the team put together, but we're going to spend the $100,000 on, all right, we're not going to spend $100,000 on outreach to businesses that will fall under the auspices of the state law, but we're going to use that money to do outreach to businesses that would not be covered by state law. Is that, is that kind of what we're, we're talking about?
I, I think we're looking at targeted outreach. This is, we're not going to exclude anyone. But I think what we're, what we'll do with the money and what we'll work with the, with the provider is to say, here are businesses, we, again, we can, we can, we have tax record data, here are businesses we would like you to focus on. And we can work with the chamber, we can work with other business organizations in town, once we have that list, and say, we want to focus on that. We're going to spend our energy and time trying to get those businesses to go through the, and maybe you could just put up the slide again. I want to get the term correct. The, the scoping, perform scoping assessment. I mean, that's the, that's the most costly piece of this. The outreach pieces, I mean, it's general, I think staff resources, based on Council President Walsh's request, will work on those businesses that would not be otherwise required to meet this. And then if they say, hey, this is very interesting, we connect them with the service provider. The service provider provides the scoping assessment. That scoping assessment is, is a cost to us, but that scoping assessment would be focused on those businesses that would not otherwise be required to. That's what I'm hearing from at least Council President Walsh this evening.
Yeah, good. That's great clarification. So would businesses who are not going to be covered by the provisions of the state law be eligible for the $75 million?
Some of them, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I was done.
Yeah, some of them are, the multifamily, I know, is, and I believe, I may not have this correct, but some under the $50,000, but I need to check on that. I know at least multifamily is allowed, where they're not required to comply with the law yet. However, they will with the new amendment that's still undergoing rulemaking for energy targets.
So they would be eligible then for the subsidies?
Yeah.
So all we're really talking about is changing kind of a prioritization of outreach, right? A broader, more targeted outreach?
That's what I'm, Council President Walsh, please correct me, but that's what I'm hearing you say, and I, I think there was general interest. I don't want to put words in Councilmember Hunt's mouth, but general interest in doing that as well.
Well, and technically, it came from Councilmember Hunt first, but, you know, whatever. The other thing I would throw out there is any focus that we can do on nonprofits as part of our focused outreach, I think, would be appreciated. So I think, based on what I'm hearing, then, I'm probably comfortable bringing, having that come back on the 7th and then making it for the 18th. I don't know about the other members.
Yes, I am as well.
I, I am as well, and probably even more so. I think with a small modification to the discussion around outreach, I feel like we could do it tonight.
I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the outreach is a very small portion of the $100,000. So it's a small part of the program. Most of the funding is going to these performing scoping assessments. So it's, it's targeting, the, the prioritization would be targeting for the program, which would include the scoping assessments, which would be the bigger piece, but the outreach would be for everyone, so they're aware. So my understanding is that.
And, and again, my previous experience, I didn't do this directly in Evanston, but the staff members that did work for me, businesses don't care. I mean, I, I don't mean to be rude about it, but they don't, because they look at the bottom line. This is, they're busy, pandemic, recession, all of that. This is the last thing most of them want to hear. So with the outreach- So with the outreach, the outreach is really critical, because if we can say, this can save you money, there's grant money to help you do this from the state of Washington if you do this soon. So of every five that we talk to, one might say, hey, you know, I've got third-quarter numbers I've got to reach with the operation of this building, maybe this will help me get there. And so then they, we hand them off to the service provider, they do the assessment, and then they say, hey, yeah, let's make, maybe something I can do fourth quarter and end the year with fewer costs. But most building owners don't care. They see this as a nuisance. If a cop comes to their door with a summons, a sheriff with a summons, saying you're going to take you to jail because you haven't upgraded your building, then they might care. So this is a wonderful opportunity for us, again, to connect with businesses, hold their hand, say this is worthwhile, and who benefits, but the business in Issaquah and the community members, because there's reduced carbon. And there's so few things we can do as a city to directly impact carbon emissions. This is one of them.
I was just going to note that if we are working with buildings not required to come into compliance, there is not a target for them to reach in terms of energy efficiency. So just thinking of possibly reshaping this program as a more general energy efficiency program instead of the particular focus on the clean building standard could be one opportunity to better reflect that potential prioritization that we're discussing.
And maybe we can do both, because I also think we want, we don't want to throw the program out with the bathwater.
Correct. Yes.
But I think Council Member, well, President Walsh, Council Member Hunt's points are valid. And again, we have the opportunity as Issaquah to do it as you think Issaquah needs it done. So let us rally to that and get it done that way.
Okay. Thanks. And I'll just, one, I believe that the non, buildings that weren't required to be compliant, they were eligible for this program under, that we're proposing, in the original staff report, they were. So you would have to figure out how to determine what is compliance against not a standard for them in any event, as long as they're in the program. But I think, you know, I think compliance would be basically as though they were required to meet those clean energy standards. I think that's how we would internally assess the success and follow through for those. But yeah, I think you're hearing, you know, this change that we would like to see for this first pilot. Again, that's really to have the impact. If we are targeting those buildings that don't need to come into compliance, then even by entering into this program, they will be going above and beyond what is necessary. And so we have that impact. So I think, I think that would be a good change, and I think if that can be brought back quickly, that would be great. And then, yeah, on the last piece, I don't think we, I think, to the extent that information is available from Bellevue, that would be most similar to our situation. I realize it's a newer program, but I don't think we need an extensive exhaustive search of other programs that will be less similar to us. It's really just to look at success in other cities for that particular aspect. Okay. So I think we're all comfortable with this coming back on our next committee meeting, and then quick turnaround to council?
Yeah. I guess the only question would be, do we still feel like it needs to come back? Or do we feel like we, because the only piece that the administration is going to bring back to us is that percentage of compliance. And I think that that would be something that, if they can get a hold of, would also come back to council in doing a conversation about that.
Are there any other pieces that would need to be worked out and reconsidered with this prioritization change?
Not that I can think of. I think we have an opportunity, taking the feedback from you all, from the rest of council, we have an opportunity to shape the scope of work with the service provider however we want. We're not under contract with anyone, so we can really shape that prioritization in that contract, but.
And it's just the outreach, as I think has been said a couple of times this evening. The vast majority of the money associated here is going with the scoping assessment. So I think we can be precise in the request on the outreach, and we'll be doing it ourselves. There's an intern that Stacy has, I think your plan was to have the intern involved in some direct outreach as well. So, yeah, we can include that, and we could come back on the 18th and put it on the regular business so that we can make sure that all this gets reported out, if that's would work, versus coming back to the committee and then taking it back to council, whatever the committee's pleasure.
So one question. On the prioritization, my thought had been that the prioritization would be for the buildings that also go through the scoping assessment process. Is that your understanding?
It can be. I think, well, procedurally, that gets a little bit more complicated, because are we then going to say, if a building that's not, that would normally be interested and otherwise has to do, would they have to wait? Or would we be, we'll be saving slots for them? Because I think, because I think all along this has been, kind of, it's first come, first served, regardless. And so if that's not the case, then we would have to come up with a mechanism to say either a certain number of these would be reserved for those based on the outreach program, then the balance could be any other qualified building, or we would, I guess that's what it would have to be.
Councilmember Ray?
It seems to me that the outreach is the prime mover. It's the one, it's the move that fills the pipeline, and then the pipeline flows through. So if we focus the outreach, and to Council President Walsh, you know, Target knows the law is coming, they know what to do, they can get ahead of it. So what we're trying to do is reach those people who really aren't aware of it and motivate them to jump into it, and also to focus on those that would not be required by state law to do this. So I think I agree that the biggest change is reprioritizing the outreach. And then, you know, once someone's in the mill, I guess, we're, the same criteria would then apply downstream to, you know, performing the scoping part of it, too, you know? But I think, you know, that's the same criteria, you know, we're going to support these types of buildings first.
And I think the other issue is that it's the end of June. And so if we find that there's wild interest among a lot of buildings that, I mean, overall, and the contractor comes back and says, sorry, we've spent all your money in six months, then we can come back to the council and say, here's boots-on-the-ground data. This is, these are the buildings that have applied, these are the sizes, these are the ones. And then I think with that data, you can decide, okay, let's put some more money into this. I mean, not unlike the previous item. Again, when you're at the forefront of something, you don't always have all the answers. But if this is successful, we can come back with lots of data, and if the council chooses to make additional investment, great. If not, then we move on to the other issues in the climate action plan.
I don't know that, you know, to Council President Walsh, I don't know that I need to see this again in committee. That being said, our committee meeting is between now and the next council meeting, and so we could have a quick touch on it, and it wouldn't really affect anything in terms of the timeline. So.
I'm fine with this going to, going to the council, regular business. I do think if we advance it without another committee meeting, it should go on regular business. And it, I think, we can, we can advance, our recommendation can be to advance this to the full council with these scoping changes, sort of pending, seeing that data and scoping changes. Does that work?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Then I'll make that motion that I just indicated. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 And Council Member, members of the committee, thank you. I pushed you a little hard. I did it because we want to move the Climate Action Plan forward. And if being a little bit nimble and, you know, trying to kind of get to yes is going to help to do that, I hope that that's appropriate, because really, the community has spent so much time doing the plan and really said to us and continues to say to us almost on a daily basis, why isn't it done yet? And so here is a low-hanging fruit, where we really think we can actually have some tangible results. So I appreciate your willingness to be a little creative there toward the end to help move this forward. So thank you.
Thank you. And I think, and my fellow councilmembers can chime in, but I think we're all on the same page. We all recognize the importance of the Climate Action Plan and the importance that the community has rightfully put on implementing that Climate Action Plan. And the concerns that you're hearing from those of us who voiced our concerns is really to make sure that it's, has the impact that we are setting out to have. So that's where these concerns are coming from, and appreciate the work on this item. And we'll look forward to seeing it come back to the regular council, the regular council meeting, or council meeting on the regular agenda. Do you have what you have, what you need from us?
Yes. Thank you. We'll make those revisions and look forward to talking with you in July.
Okay. Great. That was our second and final agenda item for this evening. So I will ask if there's any announcements that any councilmembers have at this point. And there being no announcements and no further business, we are then adjourned at 8:12 PM. Thank you.